All right, good evening. It is 6:30 on Tuesday, February 22nd. It is the day of twos. It is 2/22/22. It is 6:30 and we have a quorum and I am calling this meeting to order. We are so lucky to have two girls from the third grade from Blue Bonnet Elementary. Their favorite subject is math and as Marley Malone told me, math is science and science is math. So she's my new best friend. And Marley's friend, Allison Ritchie, but I found out that her friends call her Ally. So let's have a round of applause for Ally and Marley that are going to lead us in the pledge tonight. You guys can come up. If you would please stand and join them as they lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, you guys turn around and let your parents take a picture of you together. There you go. Let's give them a round of applause. If you will please remain standing, we are honored to have our longstanding police chaplain, no pun intended, Bob Long, our longstanding police chaplain. Pastor Long, if you would please lead us in the invocation tonight.
I'm glad I can still stand. Lord God, I just thank you for the opportunity to live and work and play in Bastrop, Texas, where I was born and went to school. And Lord, I just want to see it be a good place. And I pray for our mayor, city manager, and our council to make good and godly decisions for every generation, but especially for the ones that they're leading right here in this city. Now, Lord, I was requested to pray for everybody at the back table as well. They feel left out. So, Lord, I pray for them. Of course, I always pray for the chief and the assistant chief of police because I'm a chaplain. But, Lord, I just thank you for Bastrop and the hometown feeling we still have, no matter the fact that we're growing, and we ask that you help us with our growth in Bastrop. I pray that you give wisdom and knowledge and discernment and understanding to this council and to all those who present tonight. May it be done peacefully and in order. We just thank you for Bastrop. We thank you for what you're doing here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Long. You may all be seated. All right, we're going to get going on item 4A, which is the mayor's report. I have a couple of quick things before we launch into the report. It is a crazy world. It is going to be freezing the rest of the week. It was 80 something degrees this afternoon, so in the typical, make sure you protect your pets, your plants, your pipes, just all of that good stuff. Be aware of the weather. Our hearts and thoughts and prayers go to the people in Ukraine. There is just crazy stuff going on in this world. I did want to acknowledge and congratulate both Ms. Cheryl Lee and Mr. John Kirkland. They did not have an opponent and so they are officially council member elects. Let's give them a round of applause. You know that I always like to share civics lessons because sometimes people have questions they don't exactly understand how stuff goes, but we are always following state statute with everything. But the way this works is there won't be an election because they didn't have an opponent. We're having some discussion and it's highly likely that we will, we're going to consider moving the charter election off till next May and that would just save us the cost of the election. But even though they didn't have an opponent, the people who are currently serving in the places that they ran for, their term is not up until May. So the council member elects won't be sworn in until after Election Day. So all of those dates stay the same. We just don't have the cost of an election and people don't have to go and vote for only one choice for two seats. So just wanted you guys to know how that worked and definitely want to welcome Ms. Lee and Mr. Kirkland. Look forward to working with both of them. And then Chaplain Long was talking about the people that are sitting in the back of the room and they, they take a lot of grief and sometimes they don't get a lot of compliments for things that they do do correctly and do well and work very, very hard. And I want to call out Paul Gonzalez, who is a Public Works guy, and he saw something that did not seem right to him. And he made a phone call and the police showed up and because he made a phone call, two burglary cases were solved because he paid attention and he called one of his peers. So that's something special that I think does not happen all in all places and that's part of why we all love being in Bastrop and love serving Bastrop. So I, let's give Mr. Gonzalez and the Police Department a round of applause. All right, Colin, let's jump into my mayor's report. Just a few things for the first few weeks of February. CC Wine &amp; Company was the sponsor for the Alive After Five. It's very important for you to note that I do not have a glass of wine in my hand. Many of you know I do not drink in public and I was not drinking at CC Wine &amp; Company, but I do appreciate their great business and they are a wonderful business to have on Main Street. Just below that, you will see that I completed my early voting. Early voting is still going on. Yes, yesterday was a holiday, so there was no early voting yesterday, but the election is Tuesday and I would just encourage everyone to participate in the March 1st primary. Then you see the CAC Cowgirls and Clutches. The Children's Advocacy Center is one of our nonprofits that the city supports and they do phenomenal work and we played bingo and tried to win purses and no one at our table won anything, but we did enjoy each other's company. Moka Ventures. Moka Ventures is a new business that's coming to town and they had an open house on Friday and I attended that and they were celebrating the fact that they had closed on the property they're purchasing in our industrial park. So we are happy to have them in town. And then just below that, I also, my husband got voluntold that we were going to the Valentine Cabaret and dinner and we enjoyed the show and had a great time and that performance went on two nights. And I know that in my previous report, I had told you guys that I had gone to Crowns. So we're just so thankful for all the great productions that are going on at the Opera House. Then the next slide, I think Colin goes straight to, yeah, upcoming. I will be in Georgetown on Friday morning at a TML board meeting. I want to remind everyone, March 2nd is Texas Independence Day. That is a city holiday, so the city offices will be closed on March 2nd and invite everyone to come out. It will be the first Thursday on March 3rd and we, I'll be hosting Farm Street Opry. And our next council meeting is March 8th. So that is my mayor's report. And Councilmember Plunkett, I don't know if you want to go first or last. Do you have a preference?
I'll go last.
I thought you might say that. Councilmember Jackson, show him how it's done.
Okay, well, it was a very interesting week. It was a very busy week. Unfortunately, I was supposed to have done the Valentine's Cabaret and I, because of my sinus infections and operations and things, I was unable to do that. So I missed doing that, but I did go to the Crowns musical at the Opera House and enjoyed that. And I went, not only opening night, but I went the last two days also because we brought in an exhibit of hats from, well, one local lady and one lady from Elgin. And so we had an exhibit of hats that was really nice. Ms. Etta Madison, who lives right on MLK, brought her hats and Ms. Gwendolyn Johnson from Elgin brought hers. And so people got to see what Crowns were actually like and hats and that was really fun. I went also to the Moka Ventures Open House and really welcomed them into the community. It's really going to be a nice business for us and I'm excited about that. And that's all I really have for now.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Crouch?
I got to go to a Main Street board meeting, which was, I'm very underrepresented there because it's all women and me. So I, kind of odd for me to sit there, but I enjoy it and I learned a lot of, a lot of nice things. And I got to meet the code enforcement officer this past time because I missed her on the last Main Street meeting. And then I just bumped into her down by the post office, walking down the street and got to visit with her for a while the very next day. So it was pretty coincidental and nice, nice to meet her, a very nice lady. I've been putting together a, a building survey with the help of a ton of people, trying to get some good questions to put in front of citizens and people that use MyGov so we can get some ideas on what's working with MyGov, what's not working with MyGov and what's working with the B3 code and what might not be working and how we can continue to make that a better program for everybody. So I think I've got enough questions for that to kind of pin down some if we can vote on that sometime soon. And biking, I've, I've been, reached out to the biking people again and I'm hoping, Paul, that maybe you can help me with the new parks report that's coming out or the Parks.
The Parks Master Plan?
The Parks Master Plan is coming out and maybe in conjunction with that, I can hook up the Texas Bike Association and the Greater Austin Bike Association and get maybe some, something that we could put some kind of lanes in town to where we're kind of protected a little bit since we have a lot of new sidewalks and parks and paths and connect point A to point B. So that's coming up since it's warming up a little bit and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Don't worry, you're the only man in the room. As a person who's very often the only female in the room, you'll get used to it. You'll be fine. You'll do good. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, Mayor, I didn't get to go to the Valentine dinner because you know I was busy, but I did go to the Historical Landmark Commission meeting and those, those are really totally fascinating. I mean, I learned so much from those people. It's amazing. They really do a lot of good job and they really care about what they're doing. I also got to go to the Hunters Crossing meeting for a little bit of, they scheduled them on the same day, so they both got to see me for five minutes. But they're, they're pretty good and I think the Hunters Crossing is coming. We kind of got it all figured out.
Great.
Couple of years of mess, but I think it's worked out. But other than that, I'm good to go.
Excellent. All right, Councilmember Plunkett, what have you got for us?
I've just been getting onboarded. I've met with Paul a couple of times now and we had a good meeting out at the wastewater treatment plant today. Got to get a tour of that. And met with Allen today with my onboarding, part of my onboarding. So I'm just learning as fast as I can and trying to get ready to go.
Excellent. Well, welcome to the team. We're super glad to have you. All right, council, we're on item 4C, the city manager's report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Curtis Hancock, Public Works Director, has reported real progress on converting a portion of Bob Bryant Park to a disc golf course. Councilmember Plunkett, this council, a few months ago, accepted a donation from some local folks who are very involved in disc golf and so we are proceeding to implement those donations and create that golf course here. Colin, the next slide shows some photographs of volunteers and city employees busy at work. And we will schedule a ribbon cutting at some point in the future and council will coordinate with your, with your calendars on that once we get closer to time to do that. As several of you mentioned, there was a tour of the wastewater treatment plant that is currently on, under construction. New Councilmember Plunkett and new councilmembers elect Lee and Kirkland had a chance to visit with, again, Curtis Hancock, our Public Works Director, and the two assistant city managers and me. They had lots of great questions about that plant and who it's going to serve, how many people it's going to serve at some point in the future and importantly, our strategy for how we pay for that and try to mitigate the burden on the, on the current taxpayers. So that, I agree, that was a good and informative tour. And here's a photograph of us standing in front of the new administration building that's part of the construction. And thank you. That's okay. I agree. That was worthy of comment. Paul Gonzalez in our Public Works Department, just in general, does just real good and reliable and responsive work for us and yeah, that is, what he did was worthy of mention. Thank you. So council, we've been talking about the, the late January unofficial car show that took place in the parking lot at the Bursen Crossing Shopping Center nearby the Academy Store and the disruption that that created and apparently some amount of, of property damage. The Police Department and, and our communications team have been made aware that there are plans for similar events, one that was scheduled for this coming Saturday, February 26th, and then again on March the 5th. Our history here is that an Austin Car Club has, from time to time, organized, again, car shows in town without much impact. What's happening now is that we've got other car clubs from large cities, including Houston, who thought it might be a good idea to convene with hundreds of people and some amount of reckless driving and quite a bit of noise that is disruptive and we did get a lot of complaints, including from business owners in the area. We have been doing our best to communicate with who we think are the sponsors of those events, to, to let them know that we will have a presence there, to let them know what our special event permitting requirements are, which are all about making sure that noxious outcomes of something like that are taken care of and properly mitigated. What we are, our current intel seems to indicate that Saturday may be a non-event, not really sure about March 5th, but in any case, we are taking the proper steps to make sure we're prepared and thank you to Chief Nagy for heading that up. And as the mayor mentioned, next Wednesday, March 2nd, is a city holiday and city offices will be closed, but we will be the, the featured program, if you will, at the monthly chamber luncheon. And I will be giving a talk on our development process here and I am very much looking forward to that. And council members, I hope you can, you can attend and invite the public to attend as well. Council, as we've been reporting based on your action late last summer to amend portions of the signed ordinance, we, we gave quite a long grace period to make sure we were communicating well about what those new and not so new provisions of the signed code are. I think we have, well, I know we've tried really hard to cover all of those bases and used a lot of methods for getting the, the word out. That, that grace period, if you will, ends on March 1st and so enforcement will begin on March 1st. What that means, and again, there's state law provisions that speak to how this sort of thing works. The first step after the grace period ends is for us to send notices of violation and that precedes an actual citation so that folks can have plenty of time to react to that appropriately. We are going to stagger those notices of violation and, and deal with certain items first and those certain items will begin with bandit signs and feather flags and, and that sort of thing. And your next council meeting is on March the 8th and included on that agenda, and again, following up on something the mayor mentioned, council will need you to take formal action to accept the certification of unopposed candidates. And separately, we will need to ask you to take formal action to cancel the, the May 7th General City Council election as it regards candidates. And Mayor, as you mentioned, we'll also plan to have an item on the March 8th agenda for you to consider rescheduling the charter election as well. We don't see a downside to doing that at all. There's an upside that it will save money. Council, a few weeks ago, Tracy Waldron presented to you our, our annual strategic planning calendar. Now that we know who our new council members are, again, they won't take office until they get sworn in officially on May the 10th, but since we know who our new council members are, we can accelerate a portion of that strategic planning process and we'll detail what we are recommending that looks like at your next meeting. And Colin, is that it? That is it? Can I? It is the process for fiscal '23. Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty, council, do you have any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to thank you, Paul, for really trying to get that message out about the signs. I think, I mean, I saw it continuously, several times, which is important in several different ways, so I wanted to tell you thank you because I know I pushed you to tell everybody. So thank you for getting it done.
Counsel, any other questions for the city manager? All right, we do not have a work session briefing tonight, so that brings us to staff and board reports. We're on item 6A, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending January 31st. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and council. We continue with good news in January. It's a consistent, strong revenue and general fund. Sales taxes approximately 13% over forecast and 18% year over year. So very strong development fees are running at about 42% of the budget. Very small note on the, there's a few funds that are running a little below forecast and it really relates to interest income estimates. I do want to point out impact fees. We've talked about this before. It's very hard to estimate when those impact fees are going to come in. I try to make a forecast, but in the end, what we have forecasted for impact fees, we know that that money is projected because we know what homes are going to be built. We just don't know the timing of those homes. So I just wanted to point that out. Expenses, all funds are in the positive. You will be getting the audit report at our next meeting, but we did want to go ahead and point out that we did end fiscal year '21 with a very strong fund balance. My error, I did have an error in my staff report. It was not 1.6 million. It's right at about a million. And so we projected that that, we would have started fiscal '22 around 6.2, but we're really starting at around 7.177. So if you have any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
I'm just glad the, the actual went up and not down. Glad you missed that. So great job. I loved the report.
I ended much stronger than we projected.
It was a great report, very detailed, so thank you.
You're welcome.
It's always nice when revenue is up and expenses are down. It just makes it a whole lot easier to look at that report. Any final questions for Ms. Waldron? Thank you. Great job. Appreciate that. All right, we're moving on to citizens' comments and I have, it's like I've got five people signed up to speak and we're going to be doing something a little bit different and we're doing this to try to help the people that are speaking. Colin has a fancy dancy clock that's going to be running so that we don't have to have one council member that's trying to hold up a sign and keep track and do two things because they're, everybody's trying to listen. So when your three minutes are over, if you would please wrap up out of respect for the other folks that are signed up to speak. The first person signed up to speak is Marie Blazek. If you would please state your name and your address, you will have three minutes. Ms. Blazek?
Is it starting now?
Very.
Okay, hold on. My name is Marie Blazek and I live at 400 Oak Street here in town and I'm going to read quick. Okay, so thank you so much for what you're doing and for this opportunity. I have two questions, having to do with something that happened three weeks ago. When I came here to the Planning and Zoning Office to inquire about the nature, the natural area or park that will be a part of Piney Creek subdivision across the street from my house. The property was rezoned by the council four years ago to allow for the construction of a subdivision in town. When I asked to speak with a staff member recently, I was surprised to be told by the clerk that I would have to make my inquiry via a website in order to do so. I'm quite comfortable with cyber technology and computers, but I was surprised at this inconvenience. I also worried about Bastrop citizens who would find it difficult to use such technology or who may not have a computer, et cetera. How unfriendly can a public office get, especially toward the elderly and others trying to get help? It seems wrong. Although encouraging people to use protocol is fine, but to demand it is simply wrong. So I don't approve of that. Something needs to be done about that. We pay taxes and we need to be able to talk to someone. Secondly, I did finally get a partial answer after I went to MyGov 12 days later from Jennifer Bills. Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. She's the head of the P&amp;Z and this regarded the park or natural area, which is to be deeded over to the city soon. Accordingly, the nine-foot wide sidewalk around the backside of the development is the quote "trail" mentioned in the original agreement, which satisfies the developer's obligation to provide a trail. However, because I live next to the subdivision and walk that sidewalk at times, I know that the 50 acres of natural area quote "are being consumed rapidly by mesquite trees and feral hogs. I would like to find out in what sense this acreage can be considered suited to public use if indeed it is only accessible with a machete, which might also be required to chase away the feral hogs." When I and some of my neighbors fought against this large development four years ago, I was personally consoled by the thought that there would be a park on Piney Creek and I have personally experienced considerable deterioration in my quality of life as a result of the construction of the subdivision, to wit, having the earth shake beneath my feet for a year and a half and having huge trucks pound down the street for four years. However, I have two questions. Will there be an accessible area for citizens to walk and enjoy nature on the 50 acres deeded to the city of Bastrop at Piney Creek Development and when? And secondly, how can citizens more easily access staff when the, when their questions go unanswered? Thank you.
Look at you. Excellent job. Excellent job. Ms. Blazek, the way this works, we, we can't really interact with you because it wasn't posted, but certainly we can ask the city manager to get back with you and get those answers. And I believe that we are all quite surprised and I don't think it's been our understanding or experience that someone can't walk in and ask questions or get a meeting, but we will have the city manager get back with you.
Okay.
Okay? All right. The next person is Rick Neff and I guess y'all, Rick, you and Joey are doing a tag team, so if you'll both say your name and address.
I'm Joey Nahida. I work for Hunt Communities. We're the developer at The Colony.
Yeah, I'm Rick Neff and my address is 136 Territory Drive, Bastrop, Texas, as of last fall.
So what we're here for, it's, it's pretty simple. Just want to let you guys know the issues we're having with the process when we're submitting our, our plans through the city, a solution, and then offering our help as a developer trying to, because we're all on the same team here and seeing how we can work together to get through it. So the process with what's going on when, when a developer goes in and submits stuff, in the past, it usually takes about four months, but now it takes eight months. And the reason for that is the process has gotten broken up into about eight different parts, where in the past, where it would be a lot quicker and only take about four months, there was only three different submittal parts. And so it's really the process that's kind of gumming up everything here. It's creating more work on your end as the city and then on our end as developer and that's not good for anybody. So we had a So, we had a great meeting with Trey and Jennifer a couple of weeks ago, talking about the process and just, you know, brainstorming, coming up with different strategies and things to do, and, you know, we, I'm eating up Rick's time. So, but, you know, we came up with some good ways, and there's other cities and other governmental entities that only do a three-part process, and that's kind of what we're looking for. And then, just offer our help as the developer. How can we help you guys do that? Because again, we're all here on the same team. We all have the same goal and objective.
And I'll just echo what Joey was saying, in that, you know, our interest, all of my interests is both professional and personal now. I would like to see the city prosper, and this eight-step process, it just, if at the end of that time, we were coming up with a better product, or, but we come up with the same product, it just takes longer to do it, and it takes a lot more effort on the staff's part and on our part. And we delay, and we delay, and we delay, and as much as we're trying to deliver affordable housing, that just adds to cost. So, we would like to be part of the solution. We're not here to complain. I think we've been very, very patient, very patient, and we will continue to be. We want to be part of the team that, you know, that helps. As you guys are looking at growth, you know, that's what I've been doing all my career, and I'd love to help, you know, just share my experience with you guys, take it or leave it, but just, you know, this is what's worked in the past. So, thanks very much for letting us talk.
Thank you for your time.
You have six more seconds. Anything else you want to say? All right.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, Donald Barron. Mr. Barron, if you'll state your name and address, you too will have three minutes.
My name is Donald Barron. I've lived here for 54 years in Bastrop. Thank you guys for letting me talk to you this evening. I feel like I'm kind of piling on.
If you could just state your address, just so that we have it on the record.
My address is 185 Hoffrich Road in Rose Anky, Texas now.
Thank you.
Lived here in town for 20-something years. When I say I feel like I'm piling on, I feel like I'm an ambassador for Bastrop. Having lived here for as long as I have, when new people come into town that want a custom home built, it's becoming inordinately difficult to be able to work with the form-based code to be able to give a person a pertinent answer to something in a timely fashion. I know the staff is working very hard right now to try to do this, but they're policy followers, they're not policymakers, and so what they're doing is also exemplifying to you guys that the system doesn't work very well. The lady that came up just a second ago said it's very difficult. I have three staff members, that, a woman that's 74, a lady that's 28-years-old, and a guy that's 30-something. The two girls said, "Please don't make us do any more stuff with the city. We can't get anything done. It's frustrating." The guy told me today, every time he wants to go and do something, that if he has to respond, he has to fill all the fields back in a second time, because it doesn't record anything, which means that every time we're doing something, it's like starting all over again. It's 50 First Dates all over. So, what I would say to you tonight is, like those guys said a while ago as a builder, love to be a part of a process. As an ambassador, I want to say that Bastrop welcomes the people that are coming in here, because these people have a lot of money, and they want to increase property values, but right now, they're all saying outside the city limits is a whole lot easier to do. So, please take it to heart, and let's try to straighten this up a little bit, so it can do what it needs to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron.
All right.
All right, and the last person we have signed up to speak is Carrie Fossler. Ms. Fossler, if you would please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street. It's rare that unremarkable things get remarked upon, because they're simply that, unremarkable, unlikely to be noticed. There's no passion, there's no rage, there's no impetus to speak when things are trucking along in good order. My citizen comment is dedicated to the acknowledgement of all the things that are quietly working, and a request. I tip my hat to the hard-working planning staff who reply to me quickly all the time and consistently point me in the right direction to get the information I need to continue my projects. I consider myself to be in a longstanding, mutually respectful relationship, and as I embark on a small housing development with my sister in the next few months, I'm grateful to have this partnership with the Planning and Development Department. I hear that citizens and small businesses are having frustrating experiences, and I'm glad they're using this time to voice their concerns. Feedback is crucial to the improvement of our systems. Though I haven't personally experienced difficulty with the mygov system, I hear that some folks have, and I think it would go a long way to have a staff position dedicated to helping folks navigate the mygov system. Different than a class, different than an instructional booklet, and different than an informational session, all of which has been very, very helpful and crucial, I'm talking about a relational human being whose focus is helping applicants getting their online applications complete, so the processing can begin, and their projects can come to life. I'm talking about someone who knows the codes well and can offer creative solutions. I'm talking about someone public-facing, who can help the people, and also staff-facing, who can gather feedback about the things that aren't working, like real-time feedback, real-time gathering of data, real-time observation of patterns, and surely, patterns are forming that we can be studying. And if the listening isn't happening, I would venture to say that the learning isn't happening. Our town is film-friendly, bird-friendly, music-friendly, tourist-friendly, and as a community, we designed these codes to be even more friendly for developing, yet something is getting lost in translation. I don't think the code is broken, and I don't think the people are broken. I think it's the communication that needs good attention, and more specifically, I think it's the two-way communication. Call it what you will, a shepherd, a navigator, a liaison, a concierge service. People need more personalized attention than the current system is set up to give. Let's give it to them. And once again, thank you all to the Planning and Development staff. They're awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fossler. I wanted to say, and we're absolutely, we'll take it in, and we can't have a lot of conversation, but we are allowed to respond with facts, and Viviana Andreas, that is her job, to help people with mygov, to be the person who can talk to them, to help them upload projects, that we have a person, and that is their job. So, that doesn't, I'm not saying that we don't need to do some more things, and we'll ask the City Manager to look into it, but if you're looking for a person tomorrow to talk to, it's Viviana. All right, with that, we are going to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda, Counsel. Does anybody wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Is there anybody in the audience that wants to pull anything off the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Consider action to approve city council minutes from the February 8th, 2022 regular meeting and February 9th, 2022 special meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-30 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointing Mayor Connie Schrader as the General Assembly Representative to the Capital Area Council of Government, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
A move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson, and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the rule.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Jackson, I apologize.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Counsel. We are now on the top of Page 3. Item 9A, consider action to approve a recommendation to increase salaries for water and wastewater distribution and plant operations staff. Ms. Cantrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager Hoffman. I am here this evening to bring to you salary increases for water wastewater distribution division and plant operations salary increases. I'm going to talk to you about two separate things this evening, something that we've already done in a recruitment effort, and something that we need to do to alleviate salary compression and create internal equity among existing staff for what we've done to recruit in this particular department. So, the water and wastewater distribution division has not been fully staffed for over a year. So, this division consists of eight employees. We have a foreman, Chris Rose, we have a crew leader, Leo Lopez, and then one systems tech, David Sides. Since December, five of those six systems technicians positions were vacant. So, this poses a threat to our citizens for safety, but huge shout-out to these three guys that have kept this system that I'm about to tell you what they maintain going over the last several months. And moving forward, even as we fill these positions, there's a lot of training that goes on before somebody can come on rotation of, on-call, and these eight employees in this particular division work a seven-day, 24-hour-a-week on-call status. So, instead of it being every seven weeks for our guys, it's been every three weeks for these three employees. So, huge shout-out to Chris and Leo and David Sides. So, as I said, in December, five of those six budgeted positions were vacant, so we reached out to public sector personnel consultants who completed our salary survey study in '21 to go back to market to look and see what cities are doing, because this is across Texas, across the states, it's hard recruiting these particular positions. So, what we found was our entry-level salary started at 1550 an hour, and central Texas and all throughout our competing areas and the cities that we looked at are starting salaries were around the $18 an hour, so that was significantly different. So, in an effort to fill these positions, we didn't move the position on our pay grade. We have what's known as a pay grade, and then we have steps in those grades. So, these positions remained in their same pay grade, but we moved them up on the steps to get more competitive with our entry-level pay. So, we increased our systems technicians that we were trying to recruit from 1550 an hour to 1803 an hour. Did this help? Absolutely. We started, we changed our job posting at the end of December, and we had five open positions. Now, we have filled, intentively filled, four of those five positions. Two are already on staff, one starts Monday, the 28th, and the fourth person goes for their drug screen and physical this Friday. So, yes, it's been a tremendous help. So, that's something that's already been done, and I want to go forward and say, these guys are charged with ensuring public safety by doing the following. It's huge. They maintain 77 miles of water mains, 4,068 water connections, 769 fire hydrants, 1,372 valves, eight employees, 63 miles of wastewater system mains, 3,619 wastewater connections, and 700 manholes. And let's not forget that these guys were also, along with many of our other public works and our safety personnel, for the snow apocalypse last year, stayed at the shelter and for days, taking care of our citizens' homes while their homes were left, you know, without them to take care of. So, these guys do a really great job. So, with that being said, the estimated cost, we've already done that, but we need to bring our current systems tech and our operators. This has created some salary compression and internal inequity, so we need to plan for that, and so, the estimated cost of the new pay step placements for all current employees in water wastewater distribution and plant operations for the remainder of this fiscal year is approximately $60,000. And please note that there's no budget impact, because we have salary savings, so this isn't a budget impact problem. But however, it will increase the base budget for the next fiscal year by $92,000, so that's why we're bringing it before you here tonight, because this will affect the base budget moving forward. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any question? Councilmember Jackson?
Now, I know that it takes a lot of certification and training for these staff members also, so are the new people that you're getting in already certified, or are they going to have to go through that training and to obtain those certifications also, or is it kind of a mixed bag?
Yes, they can go through the training to receive. It is kind of a mix. So far, who we've recruited will have to go through the training for their certifications, and we pay for that and send them, and they're more than willing to go for those, so yes. And our operations field is where it's really important, but we encourage it in our systems and our distribution field as well.
Okay, I was just wondering if, you know, if we were, if we're coming up to the standard or to the salaries that are in the, you know, within our region, the Austin area, if we were going to be able to find some people that were already hopefully certified that might relocate to Bastrop and come in, I didn't know if that was being considered, or if that had happened at all.
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's being considered. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Crouch?
To go off what you just said, as far as people relocating to Bastrop for a wage increase, I think that this would definitely help that, and it will help our people, help us retain our people, because they'll be paid adequately for what they're doing. And I think our staff all works as hard as they possibly can, and I surely don't have an issue with a wage increase for that staff, for sure.
Councilmember Rogers?
Going off what Councilmember Jackson said, it was like Councilmember Doc said. So, you said it was a mix, some are certified, some are not certified? If, just from my knowledge, because I'm curious, if, let's say, there's somebody applies and they already are certified, do they get like a bonus, since it's not going to cost the city to certify them?
We actually have certification pay, so if you have your Level Cs for water and wastewater, you get $50 a month for each of those. If you have your Bs, you get $75, and your As, it's $150.
Oh, cool.
So, that's built in.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
And it also moves them, if they're operators, up the pay grade, too. So, yes.
Thank you, Counsel. I think it's important to note, and several of you went and toured the wastewater treatment plant today, a wastewater treatment plant that we're spending millions and millions of dollars on that has no one to operate it is really not too helpful. So, it's really nice to have positive. Councilmember Plunkett, were you going to say something? Okay. So, Councilmember Jackson, was that a motion, or I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Sure. I would like to go ahead and approve the recommendation for the wastewater distribution and plant operations staff salaries increasing.
I second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, and a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the rule.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and you get to stay there for 9B.
Look at me.
Consider action to approve a recommendation to increase salaries for the patrol division of the Bastrop Police Department. Ms. Cantrell?
Yes. Isn't it wonderful to live in a community that supports and appreciates our police patrol staff? It's unfortunately becoming less and less common, but that has everything to do with our police being present in our community and earning the trust from our citizens. So, it's just such a blessing to be a part of that. So, tonight, we bring before you, we're proposing a 12.5% salary increase for the patrol division. Again, this is a recruiting effort. So, I'm going to talk to you about two separate things here, too. We're going to talk about the patrol division, which is made up of our police officers and our sergeants, and I'll get to that in just a second. And then, for our, say, our detectives and other staff, y'all will be visiting that at the new fiscal year, when you talk about budget and things like that, we'll really dive in for them. So, this is all about recruiting. So, we're fully staffed with 26 sworn officers at our police department, but in those 26 sworn officers, that also includes the chief of police, the assistant chief, the lieutenant, it also includes five detectives, and also a community resource officer. So, with that being said, you take those out of it, that leaves 12 patrol officers and five sergeants that are, for lack of a better saying, those are the boots on the ground, those are the ones that are doing the calls. So, since the beginning of 2020, 12 officers have left the department, and currently, we are five positions vacant, which is 30% of those boots-on-the-grounds I'm talking about. That's a lot. So, the good news is, we've got two cadets that are about to graduate, and one officer that we've given conditional offers of employment to, and I'm going to talk about the cadets a little bit later. They're going to be graduating in March, so that's very exciting. But, so, these 17 boots-on-the-ground, let's talk about how they serve our community by being guardians of the public. I love that phrase. They're guardians of the public. In 2021, although short-staffed, the officers made the following. 2,000, those 17, which were not fully staffed all the time, 2,560 traffic stops. That's an average of 213 a month. Patrol responded to over 11,000 calls for service, which included 1,000 motor collision, vehicle collisions. That's almost 1,000 a month. Despite being short-staffed, and the patrol division continues to receive positive accolades... accolades by a ratio of 20 to 1. So that's amazing. They are out there hitting the streets, taking care of our citizens, and not many complaints. And they're working really hard with limited staff. So the next thing we're going to talk about is how did we get to that 12.5% increase for the current, um, patrol staff? In January 2022, the police department, mainly Chief Nagy and Assistant Chief Stefanik, began a data-intensive study. And this study analyzed data from 45 patrol data and cadet, uh, officer and cadet applications to determine the level of competitive, competition, um, that we have. How they did this was, there, on the personal history statement that when you apply for an officer position or cadet, one of the question is, what other agencies have you applied for? So they combined that data, and the group as a whole had applied for 269 other law enforcement agencies before considering Bastrop. That's a big number. So for this intense data, um, study, they also did, open records requests were sent to central Texas police agencies for the exam results. And what those results showed was that an overwhelming result from this was that the applicants had not considered Bastrop. So the competitor results from this, um, data study, we found that our competition is Round Rock, Georgetown, Leander, San Marcos, Kyle, Hutto, Lockhart, Flugerville, Sheriff's Office in Travis Williamson in Bastrop County, as well as our local BISD police department, which now has their own police department and wonderful hours of eight to five. So that's a huge plus for these new guys. So our average starting wage for an officer in central Texas, we found it to be $26.58. Bastrop's starting wage is 2380. So we're 14th out of 15 cities. Not a good rank. Um, so that's how we got to our 12.5%. That gets us to 2678 on our scale. If you've looked at the attachment, that got us to 2693. That's where our pay schedule falls. So we've gotten really creative in our hiring practices also to alleviate some of this recruiting, um, problems. We started the cadet program. So any progressive central Texas agency that you talk to has already started this. Well, we've started it too now, and we're really excited to announce that I said earlier, we've got two grad, uh, graduates coming, uh, March 12th, and we've already made a conditional offer of employment to them. They'll be able to start the week after graduation. And right now, we are also in, they're currently in the process of, uh, considering two more applications, um, in the pool that they have. So those two new cadets will go to the new CAPCOG, uh, academy that's scheduled to start in March, and then they should graduate in September. And then if we have vacancies at that time, then they will slide into those vacancies as well. And the really great news on that is, three of these four cadets that are scheduled to have graduated from the academy by the end of this fiscal year are local. So talk about cradle to the grave. You know, they've grown up here, they're invested in this community, we're going to send them to school, and they're going to come back and protect our citizens. I mean, it's just really, it gives me goosebumps. So as I said earlier, this particular, um, what we're asking for today is just for the boots on the ground, the patrol division, and our sergeants and the police officers. That's got a fiscal year 22 impact of 80,000, which is, um, also, uh, for 62,000 allocated for a, a cadet program. And there's no financial impact on this fiscal budget because we, of course, have it in salary savings. And then, um, Merk amended for inclusion in the fiscal 23-year budget. This will increase the base budget by 160,000, so it'll have an impact on moving forward when we're budgeting for future fiscal years. So we're bringing that before counsel. And with that said, I'd like to quote, um, oh, I didn't put his name on here. Adair, yes. Red Adair. If y'all don't know who he is, he was the guy that, yeah, he was an innovator and highly specialized in hazardous and professional extinguishing, capping oil well blowouts, both land-based and offshore. And he said, "If you think it's expensive hiring the right people, wait until you hire the wrong people." So, and John Wayne did a movie on him, so you know he's really a cool cat. Any questions?
You were so close, and you just went one step. Councilmember Crouch, do you have a question for Ms. Cantrell?
I, I think it's great that, um, we're able to offer some more funds for the, for the police department. Uh, there, there was one paragraph in your statement that said that half of the people were leaving, uh, over performance improvement plans, pressured to perform or terminated for cause. And I think that the ability to, to pay higher wages to new officers coming in would give us better quality officers that want to come here and work, and especially if they're working or live in the city already, it just gives them more of an incentive to, to come here. And so I, again, I, I'm for that, and I'm, I'm glad that we can, we can afford to give the, the policemen that we have, uh, added bonus for, for their work that they do for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. I think it's really important, and I want to commend Chief Nagy, who's sitting in the front row, that, um, you don't lower your standards. There, the consequences of lowering the standards to just have a warm body is, I believe, what Mr. Adair was speaking to. Councilmember Rogers?
I just want to, um, thank you for looking into this because this particular, you know, department is, is already in the nation. Nobody wants to apply for it, even though Bastrop's wonderful to work for, because our citizens are wonderful. But thank you for looking into it and taking care of them, because they're important.
Thank you.
So, I, with that, I'd like to move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion or comments? Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, I did have a comment. Um, I was just so glad to see that, um, we're working with the academy. I remember many years ago when, um, we, we wanted to get local employees or local people that were interested in law enforcement, and we sponsored, uh, a cadet that is still with us today and has been with us for many, many years. And in case you don't know about that person, or council members don't know, uh, that was, um, couns- that was council member, that was, uh, Officer, um, Will Peterson McIntyre. We sponsored her at the academy, and, uh, I think we paid for the, paid for her to go to the academy, and then she became an officer with us, and she was local, and she's remained with us. And so, uh, I'm just glad to see that we're going to be getting more people that are local involved and getting them from the academy also, and getting them involved. So that's, I think that's a feather in our cap.
Thank you for remembering that, and I'll add one more to that, because Sergeant Chavez started out as a cadet, and he's still with us, so.
Excellent. Counsel, any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Let's have a round of applause for our police department. All right, we're going on to item 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2022-29 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a cost-sharing agreement between the City of Bastrop and Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction Limited for sizing of water main improvements to a not-to-exceed amount of $86,909 is attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. DeCarvialo?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. So in front of you now, for your consideration, I have a cost-sharing agreement between the City of Bastrop and Lennar for the water improvements. Just to give you a little bit of history, you may remember that on January of last year, City Council authorized the approval of a construction contract with BAR contractors for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant number three. Part of the scope of this project included installing a 12-inch water line. During the planning review process for the public infrastructure of the Bastrop Grove subdivision, the planning staff and engineering staff identified an 8-inch water line that would be installed in close proximity of this same 12-inch water line that was already designed for the wastewater treatment plant. So with that, the city recognized that would be more beneficial to having one, uh, water line instead of two, and started conversations with Lennar about, about the possibility of increasing this 8-inch water line to a 12-inch water line that would serve not only the Bastrop Grove but the wastewater treatment plant. So with that, we started talking about some costs, and, uh, this is, was to install the 8, 920 linear feet of 12-inch water line with a point of connection starting at Hunter's Crossing, crossing, uh, Highway 304 and going east, uh, and connecting to, uh, Bastrop Grove. This segment of work previously was part of BAR's contractor for the wastewater treatment plant, was deducted from their contract, meaning there would be a credit to the city. So city is paying for the difference of the construction's cost just for the oversizing of the pipe from 8-inch water line to 12-inch and associated opportunesses. So this, here's a map. Uh, let me see if I, so the point of connection was, here's, uh, Hunter's Crossing subdivision. The point of connection was here, uh, somewhere at Hunter's Point Drive, cross 300, uh, the highway 304, and went east Greenleaf Fisk Drive, and then south on Bass Drive where the wastewater treatment plant would be connecting afterwards. Project funding is coming from certificated obligation of 2021 in the amount of 80,000, Uh, there's a deduct from BAR's contractor in the amount of 36,676, which would be a credit to the city. And just the difference between from what was the cost and the credit to the city would be $50,233. So the, uh, this project has already been complete, and we understand this project should have, this contract should have been brought to you before they started construction. However, uh, there was a need from the contractor to start this proj- project as soon as possible. So in, on their own risk, they wanted to, uh, install this water line, and this, uh, it would be better for the city not to have in duplicate infrastructure and more costs in operating and maintaining this, or this asset. So with that, we ask you to authorize the approval of this cost-sharing agreement between the City of Bastrop and Lennar. And I can take any questions you may have at this time.
One question that I have, I know that Hunter's Crossing has had problems with water pressure before, and it feels like that's going to be closing that loop and should provide some improved water service to Hunter's Crossing. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's, that's worth noting, those of you who live in Hunter's Crossing, I know that sometimes there's complaints out there. Councilmember Crouch?
Well, the slide before that said it was complete, right?
Yes.
That was my question earlier, because I must have missed it in a packet. I didn't see that it was completed, um, because I was wanting to make sure that it, if it got delayed somehow, that there's somebody was responsible for the delay and any impact and cost. But if it's completed, then that's, that's great. Thank you for, for having that.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Crouch?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the presentation. All right, Counsel, we're going on to item 9D, and, um, we're, we're going to do 9D as normal, and then we're going to have a quick conversation about the next four items. Item 9D, hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-08 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas annexing the Colorado River for 35.5 acres of the land out of the Stephen F. Austin Survey Abstract 2, located west of Lover's Lane and south of Pecan Park subdivision, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, establishing zoning and character dis- repealer severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the March 8th, 2022, regular agenda for second reading. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So this first item that's before you is specifically to talk the annexation of the Colorado River. And why we're doing this and why we're talking about it is, uh, the, uh, Bastrop Colorado Bend development, that, this is the concept plan that was from their development agreement. Um, in order for us to be contiguous to the city limits, we needed to extend our city limits from the, uh, Pecan Park subdivision, uh, across the river to touch the property for Bastrop Colorado Bend. So that's what this first item is, and this is something that we're allowed to annex under Chapter 43 of the Local Government Code as a navigable stream, um, as, and that information's in the, uh, staff report. So, um, you'll see right here, the dark red area on this exhibit is the Colorado River, and then the lighter, uh, red areas, this next item we'll be discussing, which is the Cola- Bastrop Colorado Bend property. So this is, uh, 35.5 acres. Um, the only thing that I think would change, so the, the river will still be open, there's still, there's parts of the river that are in the city limits right now. We annexed some river back in 2011, um, with our last, um, involuntary annexations on that round. The only thing that changes, I think, the police are now able to write tickets on the river. Now it's in their enforcement area because it's part of the city limits. But otherwise, other, uh, there's no other services that the city would be having to extend because it's the river, so.
And do we zone the river?
We will zone the river as the default zoning that, that comes in at as P2 rural.
Excellent. And one of the other benefits of annexing this portion of the river, it's my understanding, it also happens to butt up against where our wastewater treatment plant is being.
It gets us closer to the wastewater treatment plant, yes.
So there's, um, it, regardless of projects that go, it's a, it's a way, it's much like crossing a highway, being on the other side of 71.
Yes.
We have to technically do it because of many lawyers and lots of legal reasons, correct?
Yes.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Rogers?
I know you stated it, I just want to just state it again. So that means that we don't have to go out there and fix the Colorado River or anything else.
No.
We don't have any, except for the police can write a ticket. That's the only upkeep. If it, something happens, we're not responsible for it.
It's even so much, if I'm correct, Ms. Bills, not only can we, we don't have to fix it, we're not allowed to do anything in the Colorado River.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that we don't have to, you know, we don't want to hear the.
Yes, per FEMA and Army Corps rules, we'd have to get many permits to do anything in the river itself.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, not something we can't.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I know you said it, I just wanted you to clarify it for people here.
It doesn't change people kayaking, it doesn't, it changes, uh, it's a legal document for us to be able to be contiguous to other pieces of property.
Yes.
And I have one more question, sorry.
Yes.
And so what kind of ticket would the police, you said they could give a ticket, so what would that be, so the people understand?
I think it would probably be.
Is there a speeding thing on a kayak or something?
Disorderly conduct, maybe, if you're on kayaking and, yeah.
Chief Nagy, you're not moving towards the mic.
I don't know if we've ever issued any, any tickets on the river.
We gave you a round of applause, you're just sitting in the back of the room.
I mean, you brought, you brought it up, I just wanted them to know what, what, and how many times will I see the chief on a kayak, up there, patrolling now? There's just that one little section, though, you have to go back and forth.
Just that little section, we got to go back and forth. But yes, it could be for, um, any ordinance that could be a violation or any state law, really, that would be all of us. And then, um, she was exactly right, Ms. Bills was, disorderly conduct, noise, uh, things of that nature.
Okay.
And any game warden touched that.
Councilmember Crouch, you have to turn on your mic or no one can hear you, and I'll give you the floor in just a second. So Chief Nagy, the, um, the noise ordinance, when it, because we are annexing it, if somebody was in a kayak and shooting off fireworks, they would get, and someone called and complained, they could get a visit from a friendly City of Bastrop police officer.
That's correct.
Letting them know that that is not allowed.
They can't do that.
And to stop that.
That's right.
Okay. Councilmember Crouch?
I was just going to say that I think any game warden can go there anyway without that being in, within our city limits, right? Annexing the city limits. So they, they could have passage through there no matter what.
Yes, and technically, uh, Bastrop County could do the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still subservient to lots of other people. Councilmember Rogers?
I have one more question, sorry. Because, so let's say you did have somebody with a bonfire between there, there is a way for you to get there without going through a kayak, right?
Yes.
Because I know the Colorado, or the film, the, that'll, that'll be their property, but there's a way for you to get public access from the other side?
I believe so, yes.
Ms. Bills?
Yes, actually, right on the north side of, uh, the river is the, um, the park that was dedicated to Pecan Park, so the city actually owns that property on the north side.
I just wanted the chief to have a way to get there if we're expecting him to do something, he needs not to be swimming.
Walk down the trail, there's, there's access into that park, so, because our parks, uh, maintenance has to get down there.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have access, thank you.
Excellent question, Ms. Rogers. And is there any other questions for Ms. Bills before we open the hearing? Seeing none, we are officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
We are officially closing the public hearing, and Council, if you have any questions, or I am happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Council, we're moving on to item 9E, F, G, and H, and I want to make sure that the public is aware and that you guys are all aware, we, there's a lot of posting involved for the public hearing, we have properly posted for all of these items. We are not going to be taking a vote. Part of having the public hearing is having an opportunity to hear back from the public if there's anything that we need to consider as we finalize and dot I's and cross T's. So, um, you can expect that this would come back at a future council meeting for a vote, and, um, because, uh, we always still want to hear from our citizens, they can sign up and speak, but it won't be an official public hearing, so we won't be reposting that for a public hearing, um, at the time that we vote. So, um, as usual, staff is going to make a presentation, we will open and close the public hearing, but we are not anticipating taking a vote tonight. With that, Ms. Bills, we are moving on to item 9E, hold a public hearing and consider, and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 04 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, annexing Bastrop, Colorado Bend Phase One for three hundred and twelve point six one acres of land out of the Stephen F. Austin Survey, Abstract Number Two, located west of Lover's Lane and southeast of the Colorado River, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a findings of fact, adoption, establishing zoning and character district repealer severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the March 8th, 2022, regular agenda for the second reading, but that would only be if we were taking a vote. Ms. Bills?
Yes, so this is the second part of our annexation process to, in order to actually annex the Bastrop, Colorado Bend. So with the development agreement that was approved back in June of two, twenty twenty-one, uh, one of the, the requirements in that development agreement was to annex the property into the city limits, and it could be done in phases. So this is the first phase, uh, the total property is about five hundred and forty-six acres, this is three hundred and twelve acres. So this is their first phase that they're planning to annex, um, and zone, and then start development on, and then they'll come back with the second part of the property at a later date. Uh, so the area in the bright red is the, um, area to be annexed, um, from the property. Uh, it primarily takes act, uh, it touches currently the existing Lover's Lane to the, uh, east, and then there's, um, we'll get into it in the next several items, um, some other road extensions that are required, so. And this is allowed in the chapter forty-three of the Texas Local Government Code under, um, uh, a request by the property owner to be annexed. So we're following that process for this one.
Any questions for Ms. Bills? Everybody's good? Madam Secretary, we are officially opening the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
We are officially closing the public hearing. So, public hearing has happened, if there are not any other questions, we will move on to item 9F. 9F reads as follows, hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two oh six, twenty twenty-two dash oh six of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the transportation master plan, master thoroughfare plan, and street gid, street grid for Bastrop, Colorado Bend LLP for five hundred and forty-six point three six four plus or minus acres of, of the Stephen F. Austin Survey, Abstract Two, to the west of Lover's Lane, located within the city limits of the City of Bastrop, Texas. Extratorior jurisdiction is attached in Exhibit A and providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, a repealer and severability, establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the March 8th regular agenda for second reading. Ms. Bills?
Yes, so this, um, was something that's contemplated in the development agreement. There are several, um, different actions that need to be taken before the movie studio can actually zone the property to, um, the end, um, district they need to be able to develop the, the types of buildings and uses on the site. So the first one, um, is a transportation master plan amendment. So, oh, sorry, I've got an extra slide in there. So again, this is, uh, we're looking at the same area that we were talking about in the annexation. In our existing, uh, transportation plan, you'll see a lot of, a lot of different roads over this area. Um, these are all adopted in our master thoroughfare plan. The dark blue road, um, was originally in our, uh, transportation master plan that was, as adopted in two thousand and seventeen, so that's a call, considered a primary multimodal road. So it's a main, the bigger road, provides access to the area, and it was intended to go over the Colorado, um, and have a bridge, um, and then eventually connect back to 304. This is also reflected in roughly the same alignment in the, uh, Bastrop County's transportation plan, um, that they adopted in two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and nineteen, when we adopted the B3 codes, one of the amendments we made to the master transportation plan was to also include our local street grid, um, in areas that reflected the type of development, um, that our future land use plan, uh, anticipated. So for this area, future land use plan originally anticipated residential. So these, uh, white streets you see are our seven grid pattern, uh, that was required in the ETJ. So this is, um, what the master transportation plan currently has on the books, what's being requested is an amendment to this plan. Um, so what the amendment is requesting is to remove the local connector streets and to realign that mu- primary multimodal street, that blue road. So what that looks like on this new exhibit, and at this time, we're only asking you to consider the part that's actually being annexed and zoned, in case somehow the second phase never comes in. When the second phase comes in with annexation, we'll be bringing back that lower part. So we're looking at the, um, the top part there, removing the, uh, local connector streets, and then relocating that, um, primary multimodal that used to come like this, straight through the property, and relocating it down to cross the Colorado, um, down here, and then eventually make its way back to 304. So it's moving the bridge from crossing over here to moving the bridge to crossing somewhere down here. I will still say, these are lines on a map, we don't have an actual plan, we don't have bridge plans, um, there will be some engineering that goes into that to, uh, establish the exact location of where that's going to go, but right now, we anticipate it going somewhere right around there.
Ms. Bills, in addition to the, there are lines on a piece of paper, and we don't have exact plans, we so don't have exact funds?
Yes, there is, there is currently no funding for a bridge over the Colorado, that's that. The county had been working on pursuing, um, grant funds for, um, I think they turned in a couple of different applications and never were successful in securing that. So, uh, at this time, there's no plans nor funds to build the bridge.
Councilmember Rogers?
I understand that we moved that purple line, and I understand that we don't have any funds, but I just want people to be, because my standing that this was, um, another exit to 304 from people over there in case they're evacuating, so that we are still working on an evacuation, it's just going from a different spot to right here.
Yes.
So we're not, it's not going away, so people aren't afraid they're, we're losing that.
Yeah.
Again, we don't have any funds to build it, but we still are hopefully getting one.
Yes, we're still looking for other, other opportunities to have another crossing along the Colorado.
I just want people to understand we didn't take it away.
Yeah.
So, uh, Ms. Bills, and, and I might be directing this to Mr. Hoffman, so whichever, whoever I'm supposed to be talking to, I'm going to default to the city manager because that gets me in less trouble. I would like us to consider adding this bridge to Garver's contract, and see what the possibilities would be, see if we can partner with the county if, um, there, because what I have found is very often, there's federal money available, and there's lots of federal money that doesn't get used because somebody's not shovel-ready. So, um, you know, I'm not saying I know what's out there, but I'm saying, we're looking for funding with Garver for rehabilitation of the old iron bridge, so, um, why don't we, since we've got somebody online and they're already looking for funding opportunities, could we add, because to Councilmember Rogers' point, when you're looking at the map, what we're really trying to do is provide east-west safety to where you're not on Highway 71, and you can get across the river and you can get out. Uh, we don't ever, ever want the complex fire to happen again, but if we do, we all know, one way in and one way out is a really lousy idea. And I understand that it may not qualify, you know, and I know that there's different rules for it, and maybe it's not cost-effective to do it, but since we have so recently had a consultant that has an expertise in this area, could we possibly consider adding that to their scope?
I, I think that's a terrific idea, and you're, you're never in trouble, and, and we'll, we'll pursue that. A thought, though, that, um, I think it probably makes sense, let's, let's have that conversation with the consultant, and in particular, talk about timing, um, and get their advice as to how best to approach it, um, from that standpoint, the, as I think we've indicated, it will likely be, under any scenario, years before that, that bridge is built.
Yes, sir.
At least a couple of years.
And every journey starts with the first step, because I think that's a county bridge, I think that's a CapCog, a Campo, the state, the FEMA, the everybody.
Absolutely, and, and, and step one is to amend the, the thoroughfare plan for us and for the county. I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking it might make sense to, to sequence the, uh, the grant funding efforts a bit, old iron bridge, um...
Oh, yeah, I'm not trying to slow down the old iron at all.
Exactly.
And I know it would be different timing, but just, it, while they're, while they're around, and maybe even if it's after they've applied for the old iron, because we certainly don't want to slow that down.
And that's what I'm suggesting we have that conversation about, to make sure we get the timing right.
So as we're talking about the transportation plan and when we're talking about amending it, that's something I would like us to consider if that's a viable option. Councilmember Jackson?
I think it's an excellent suggestion. I was going to say, um, especially if we're going to have this consultant that might have some expertise to help us with that, I mean, not slowing down the process for the old iron bridge by any means, but we do need other, um, accessible routes and exit route, you know, routes outside of the, because of the fires that we've experienced in the past, and, um, I think that's really a great idea, and I hope that we can, um, at least discuss it and try to work with the county and with the consultant that we've hired, uh, that we're talking with at least about doing that, so.
Well, and I hate to keep talking about the complex fire, but the reality is, there are houses being built in Tahitian Village, and there's just people who'd like to, you know, get to work, get, get to something to eat, you know, so...
Exactly.
The, um, we, we know, we have experience with our, um, smaller sister city west of us, of what happens when you don't build roads ahead of the development, so, um, we, we've seen that science project, and we don't need to recreate it, so I just want us to be thinking proactively.
I do, uh, this did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission...
Thank you.
...at their last meeting, uh, for a public hearing and, uh, and a recommendation. Um, there were only five at the last meeting, so the vote was three to two, and it requires a minimum of five votes to make an actual recommendation to P&amp;Z, so no recommendation has, was forwarded from the P&amp;Z.
Thank you, Ms. Bills. Is that the end of your presentation?
Uh, I have a next steps, and I have this on all the slides, so originally, the next step would have been March 8th, would have been the second reading, in this case, now it'll be the first reading, um, for these items. Um, but then past that, there's still a number of steps the applicant will have to take to actually develop the property.
So I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think we're quite sure when first reading will be back on.
That's why I said future agenda.
Okay, future.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
On your pa- last slide, it said that the planning and zoning, two of them, were against it, right, three, four?
Mm-hmm.
So do you remember what their issues were?
I think their concern was, um, there is one, a house at the end of, uh, if I can get there.
Yep.
To the, um, east of where the purple line is, um, and their concern was sure that we would go around that house. And that's something that we'll have to consider when we do the design, because we don't have, it's a line right now.
And there's also going to be some, um, engineering and lots of, like we were talking about with the Colorado River, you don't just build a bridge anywhere, there's going to have to be some analysis on where the bridge makes sense, and how you do it, and how you acquire land for that, and all that kind of good stuff. But I believe your point was, um, nobody's interested in wiping out somebody's house unnecessarily.
Yeah, well, let's hope, like, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Council, any further questions for Ms. Bills? All right, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
We are officially closing the public hearing, and, uh, Mr. City Manager, thank you for taking the suggestion and, and bringing back to us the, the best way to move forward. All right, we are moving on to item 9G. It reads as follows, hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh five of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, amending the comprehensive plan by changing the future land use designation from rural residential to industry for Bastrop, Colorado Bend LLP for three hundred and twelve point five nine one plus or minus acres of land out of the Stephen F. Austin Survey, Abstract Two, to the west of Lover's Lane, located within the city limits of the City of Bastrop, as attached as Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, a repealer and severability, establishing an effective date and proper notice, and meeting, move to include on that, we already talked about that. Uh, Ms. Bills?
Yes, so this is the comprehensive plan amendment, uh, for the future land use map. Um, so again, with an agreement that, uh, was approved in June, they proposed a number of different uses, um, that would require different building types, um, it's, it's a lot of different things that are going to be contained in one site. Typically, when you're looking at sites, we're looking at things that are more strictly commercial, strictly residential, you know, they, um, strictly kind of industrial, this has a mix of all of those different things. Um, so to do, to get to that step, they would, they're asking for a zoning district that is more intense than what is currently adopted in the future land use plan. So in our future land use plan currently, the designation for this area was rural residential. And again, this, um, the comprehensive plan was adopted, um, in two thousand and sixteen with, uh, the future land use map, that was the, uh, big update we did, and we work off the information we know at the time, um, with the future land use of, um, where the utilities currently are, uh, where the roads currently are, you know, what is the best and highest use in those areas. And at the time, uh, the, the study said the best, uh, use in that area was rural residential, as there were no utilities extended to that area, so those would be larger lot residential, um, that would be up against the river. Um, since then, with the new, um, applicant, uh, we've been able to re-evaluate that, and so they're asking for a change in the designation to industry, which sounds fairly intense, but with our, uh, future land use code, that's the land use category as it's currently adopted that would allow for the zoning district that they're asking for. Um, so industry will allow for place type, um, employment center, um, in our code. So you'll see here, this is our, the yellow area is our, um, existing land use for this area of rural residential, uh, the green to the, uh, kind of surrounding it all around is our neighborhood residential. You'll see a little bit off to the side of, uh, pink, and that's our neighborhood commercial. So at the time, the, the best information we had was to, to designate it as rural residential, as it was still, it's, was in the ETJ, too. What's being proposed is to change, and again, just the three hundred and twelve acres to industry at this time, which would then allow them to rezone the property to place type invi- uh, employment center. So our comprehensive plan, uh, is regulated under section two thirteen of the Texas Local Government Code, uh, you can make, um, uh, plan amendments after it's gone through public hearings with P&amp;Z and City Council, and what we're recommending is in, uh, compliance with the development agreement that was approved in June. Uh, we sent notices for, for all these items, um, except for the, um, annexation didn't actually require, uh, notice, uh, but we sent sixty-one notices, and as of this, all these reports, we'd received three responses. Um, this one also, it's, uh, P&amp;Z, uh, got a vote of three to two, so does not come with any, uh, recommendation.
So, Ms. Bills, I have two questions, the, um, first one went flying out. The three to two, was it the same concern?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Council, any questions for Ms. Bills? So it's only the first portion, and the place dis, place of E, of, um, employment center?
Mm-hmm.
Um, as Ms. Rogers has pointed out before, that stays with the land.
Yes.
That doesn't go with other things, that stays with the land.
Yes.
All right, which is not what we're talking about right now, we're only talking about the future land use plan, and then we'll go to the character type.
Yeah, so the future land use is a guiding document, it's the zoning that actually implements the rules, so.
All right, uh, we are officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
We are officially closing the public hearing. Last chance for questions, Ms. Bills. All right, we're moving on to item 9H, hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh seven of the City Council the first reading of ordinance number 2022-07 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop, Colorado Bend zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 312.591 acres out of the Stephen F. Austin survey abstract two from P2 rural to PEC employment center, establishing a plan on 312.591 acres located west of Lover's Lane within the city limits of the city of Bastrop as shown in exhibit A, providing for a finding of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, and enforcement, proper notice and meeting, establishing an effective date and move to include." All right, Ms. Bills?
So yes, this is the zoning concept scheme, and what changes the base zoning district on this property. So with the, and when it's annexed into the city, the base zoning type established by code, when you annex something in, is P2 rural. So that's, so anything we annex in will come in with that, and it takes a council decision to change it from that designation. So what the request is, is to rezone to PEC employment center for the 312 acres. So PEC in our code is a, is a more unique zoning district that allows for a mix of building types, and allows for a different street structure. So that, so again, our new, the B3 code is more form-based, so you're looking at how the streets are arranged, how the buildings are arranged, what type of buildings are allowed, not really looking at uses as much, but the, the different mix that they want of buildings and street connectivity doesn't meet our code, so the, or doesn't meet the, all the other zoning districts in the code, but PEC is the best zoning district to meet that mix of required uses. So what that looks like right now is, it's purp, it would, it would come into the city zone as that purple, it'd be a big purple track, and then we would rezone to the gray, which is employment center.
Ms. Bills, if I remember correctly, when we were working on the P, the B3 code and establishing the place types, one of the reasons that we established the employment center was at the request of BDC.
Mm-hmm.
And it was because sometimes you don't know what the employment center is going to look like. And although it can be frustrating if you go and look at what the requirements are in an EC zoning, the reason there's very little information there is because each project is considered on its own.
Yes.
So they literally set their own rules, and then both planning and zoning and council sees what the plan is, and that's what's approved, and it's specific to that piece of land, that employer on that piece of land, and everybody knows exactly what they're getting. Have I accurately remembered that?
Yes, and I'd add to it that, that obviously by the name employment center, meaning it's something that has got a draw primarily for employees. That's who's coming there. It's not customers, it's not, you know, the general public. It's, it's your employees that are coming to that central location, be it a warehouse, or a factory, or in this case, a movie studio.
All right. Council, any questions for Ms. Bills on this topic? I'm officially opening the pub.
Well, I have, I still have more if you want.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done. I'm sorry. Keep going.
So with ours and the concept schemes, one of the requirements we have is to do a conceptual drainage plan, and that's to make sure what is being proposed actually will be able to fit on the property. So we will be especially concerned with this, with the proximity to the river and floodplain, to make sure that all the drainage works, that there is no adverse impact to the Colorado. And so on their conceptual drainage plan, that was approved by our city engineer, conceptually, they have a plan to make the drainage work. We still have two more steps, a preliminary drainage plan and a final drainage plan. And every time they come in with a new site plan, if it's different than what was there before, they'll have to do a new drainage plan that looks at the floodplain and the drainage to the Colorado to make sure we're not having any downstream or upstream effects. That's because every time you change the floodplain, that can change downstream effects. So we're going to be sensitive to that.
And if you go back to the drainage plan, it looks like the conceptual drainage plan is over the entire track.
Yeah.
So if the engineer has approved that, and if they come in with the second phase, that'll be a step that's already been approved.
Yep.
Because they, the drain, they're, as long as they don't change what was in their assumptions for the first.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So this was the, the exhibit out of their zoning concept scheme. You'll see the, there's already the existing Lover's Lane and the existing easement that the county has acquired for some drainage improvements. They will actually catering some additional right-of-way to make, to give us more room to grow Lover's Lane in the future when we need it. They also will be constructing with this phase, a second road that'll serve their development, and it will not take, that you can see right here, it, it kind of diverges from Margie's Way, so there will not be any traffic going through Margie's Way to access the development. You can see a little closer, proposed street detail. There's going to be a little kind of dedicated civic space is what we're calling it, that the city will accept, and we can have a little park or a little bus stop, something out there. But you'll see the roads.
Maybe a bike rack will be out there.
There you go. But you'll see there's a, Margie's Way is, is to the south of that, so they don't, but this road will run behind the houses that are already there. One of the things during the development agreement we talked about was them submitting what was, we call a public frontage plan that shows how they're going to treat the property at the road's edge. So this is the street detail for Lover's Lane. You'll see, there we go. Right there, that is the drainage channel that the county is currently installing alongside, on the west side of Lover's Lane. And then behind that, so you've got the street with sidewalk and streetlights, you'll have the drainage channel, and then you'll have their berm and their wall. So you'll have at Lover's Lane quite a bit of setback before any development actually happens on the site. And then along the new East-West Road, you'll see, it'll be the road, they'll have sidewalk and streetlights, and then it's setback, and I'm forgetting the numbers, about 25 feet from the right-of-way will be the berm and the wall. So from the street, you won't have, that, that was, is what will provide that buffering to the neighborhoods, the berm and the masonry wall, and then vegetation. Internal to the site, they will have their own private drives and drive aisles, and what we'll be reviewing during the site development plan on this is making sure they have fire access, that should there be an accident or something out there that our EMS and our, our fire or the SD will be able to get out there and provide emergency services. This is their proposed layout for this first phase, and you'll see this is largely their studio area. So what those S's mean, those are sound stages. So that's where you go inside and do all your filming. So that's, they actually want things to be very quiet in those areas. Warehouses to store props and equipment, office space for the productions, and then parking areas that'll be around that. And then they have other areas that they'll program with temporary sound stages, so they'll be able to put up something and take it down depending on what they need to film that day. And then some onsite residences to allow for temporary lodging for people who may be coming to work on the lot. Other things that we're going to be reviewing with this is, they'll have to do a public improvement plan that will install the streets, the two streets we've looked at, or any improvements that have to happen on Lover's, if any. At this point, we're not anticipating any other than the sidewalks, street trees, and streetlights. But then in the construction of a rural cross-section street on the south side of the property. One of the things we have been working on is a traffic impact analysis of how this development will impact existing county and city streets. We're still working on that. At current, we have some intersections that have come back at a level of service F, which is a, is a negative impact that we're trying to work through on how we can address that, to not get to those situations. And then also, the development agreement protects Heritage Trees 26 and greater onsite.
Ms. Bills, before you go on, because not everyone's familiar with the, with the traffic impact analysis, they, it's like school grades. A's good, F, F is bad. So that, that's how those are graded.
Yeah, and it corresponds to the amount of time you have to wait, usually at an intersection, to keep, continue going. The other fact, the PEC allows for 80% impervious cover. The site overall is 312 acres, a lot of it's floodplain, so we anticipate them staying well under that 80%. Maximum building height allowed is five stories, so those buildings can be all five stories, and they will all have to meet our building codes. They will require building permits as occupiable permanent buildings. Some of the standards that were waived in the development agreement was that there are no maximum block lengths or perimeters for this development. There was no pedestrian shed analysis, which would not have provided a whole lot of information since nothing's in the city limits around it. The build-to-lines, so having to bring all those buildings up to make it walkable, that's not the goal in this case. And no parking location restrictions. So in our code, right now, we require parking be behind buildings or parallel to buildings. Their buildings are going to set, be set far back, so that's not a consideration. We sent this along with the other notices. And this one, we did get a four to one recommendation at P&amp;Z, still not enough to get an official recommendation. And I don't know why that one person changed between the two, two applications.
Councilmember Crouch, I think your light was on first.
I just had a, two questions. One, has there any, been any more studies on the berm and wall design, or any more information on that, or is it still way too preliminary for that?
Not yet, other than what they provided in the, the packet.
Yeah, just had those caps.
That shows that it's going to be a four-foot berm with a, wanted to say a 14.
And then, did I miss the timeline for the traffic impact analysis? Did you give a timeline?
So the timeline for the traffic impact analysis is it needs to be finished before we do the public improvement plan to, to, so they can construct those improvements that are required.
And then would that include all the way to the end of Lover's Lane?
Yeah, so it looks, it start, it's looking at that intersection at College Street and Lover's Lane, going all the way down.
Okay.
It's looking at all those connection points where people may be connecting into or out of this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. On, on each one of these items, you showed that you sent out 300 responses, and it looked like it was always two to one or something. Are those, was that on one response for all, all these different?
There were three, yeah, it was three, three people that responded. Since we sent them out, they responded to all three items.
Okay, so it was the same response, so wasn't, I just want to make sure it wasn't six added up. It was the same, okay.
And we only had a couple people speak at the Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
I just made, make sure it's not, it was the same three, okay.
Yes, it was the same three.
Council, any other questions for Ms. Bills? All right, we're officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any sign, anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
We're officially closing the public hearing. Council, last, last chance for questions. Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, I just had a question about the response. Now, I'll remind you of where those letters are sent out to.
Those letters are sent to the property owners that are within the 200-foot area around the property in question. So we actually sent it to more, so zoning, since we kind of combined, we sent out for the comprehensive plan amendments and the zoning, so it went to all the property owners within 200 feet of not just the part being rezoned, but all the, the lower half as well. So it actually went up to more people than it normally would have.
Okay, and still just three, three or whatever.
That's, that's all we received in written comments. One of those actually was written at the P&amp;Z, that was sent into the P&amp;Z to be read.
And so everyone knows, the, our agenda was published, and so even if you didn't get a mailed notice, everyone's welcome to comment.
And we also posted signs on the site, so there actually are.
Excellent. Somebody drove by.
I think four, four or five signs total, El Camino Real on Margie's Way and on Lover's Lane that notified the neighborhood of this.
Yeah, I was aware of that. I was just wondering, I mean, you know, there's such a low response to it, everything, and then I just, you know, didn't want it to come back and bother us later on, I guess you'd say.
Hold that thought, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Crouch?
I, I was just curious, as far as the TCEQ and the river, and the discharge in the river, and the just construction requirements is going to be around that. So that's all going to be part of the permitting process.
Yes, that's all of our, our drainage process has to meet all of the state rules on drainage, and it'll also have to meet all FEMA regulations for the floodplain.
And so the city won't have anything really to do with that, right, Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, we'll have a lot to do with that. We're approving the construction.
As far as enforcement, certainly, we are obliged to follow state law.
So I, I guess that's going back to my question originally from the overpass stormwater prevention and in the skate park stormwater prevention. So that's, I thought you had read me some snippet out of the TCEQ that said for cities under 8,000 people that.
It's 10,000.
10,000.
And so you're, you're talking about the, the state's Stormwater Management Protection, SWMPP.
SWPPP, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, that, that is triggered for, that particular provision is triggered when cities become a population of 10,000.
And, and.
And that is about, that, those requirements speak to stormwater protection in, in particular.
Yeah. No, I, I knew that.
Run off from construction sites.
So now that we're, if we're still under 10,000.
Yes.
People, then that wouldn't trigger all.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I, that was my question.
Those particular provisions, right.
Because I can see issues with, with all that, with as many people that we have that use the river. I can see a lot of questions with that.
So any questions regarding the zoning concept scheme? All right, since we are not taking a vote, excellent job, Ms. Bills. You did good. All right, Council, everybody okay? Do we need a break, or everybody's okay? Everybody's okay? All right. Moving on to 9I. "Consider action to approve resolution number R2022-33 of the Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, supports, supporting the proposed Washington Park development located at 1500 Farm Street. The city manager is authorized to grant $250 and no sense reduction in fees for Washington Park to meet all programs criteria in establishing an effective date." Mr. Hoffman, do you have any comments to, all right. The applicant is here and is signed up to speak, but because you're the applicant, you get more than three minutes. So if you'll introduce yourself and to us about your project.
Hi, I don't think I'll actually take more than three minutes, since I think most of you are familiar with this, although I do have a thing about how to get more public input on your other site, your other zoning hearing. You just got to talk about some apartments, and people come on out. Anyway, I'm Sarah.
Too soon, too soon. Keep going.
It's too soon. I know. It's actually going to be really cool, I think. Anyway, I'm Sarah Andre. My address is 2318 Canterbury in Austin, Texas, right down the road. And you all know that we have been working for some time to develop 1500 Farm Street, which is very close by, just a few blocks away, and we were unsuccessful with our zoning request, and so we have come back with a proposal that does not require rezoning. And we have 36 dwelling units. It's actually 18 separate buildings, so these are duplexes that you see, which are allowed under the code. And we did a lot of work on the design, so I hope that that is appreciated. We are asking for a resolution of support. This is for our financing application. It helps us score higher in the process. It doesn't mean we will definitely get the financing that we're seeking. It just helps us score higher. As I, as I said, these will be targeted, once again, to moderate income workers. As you can see, we're expecting our average rent to be 1346. That is after utilities, so they would pay their utilities on top of that. And the average income, we expect to serve as around $56,000. I definitely heard some salary increases here, and some staff at the city of Bastrop that would definitely qualify to live here. You know the location, but there it is again, so in, just in case anyone has a question. And this is about the Texas Housing Tax Credit Process. I'm happy to go into this, if you care to hear it or to skip it, but basically, our application will go in on March 1, and we will not know if we are approved until July 34, 31, or potentially even later if someone ahead of us drops out and, you know, you get slotted back in. This is kind of what the site plan would look like. We are right there on that Gill's Branch, and we are still reserving space. Over on the far right is Farm Street, and so we are still reserving all of that green space for detention. We believe that we will need most, if not all of it. And as you can see, the homes that we're proposing to build would be along Chambers. These are all three-bedroom houses. And that is it in a nutshell. If I can figure out to that. And staff did ask me to cover some questions, so let me just double-check my list here. One of the questions was, will there be any units with ADA features? Yes, we will have 5% of our units that will be accessible. So these are the design you saw. These are townhomes, but we will have two buildings that are flats, stacked flats. So they look like the same from the outside. They look like a house, but there's one dwelling unit on the bottom and one on the top, and that is so that we can make units accessible to a person with a mobility impairment. We will have some amenities on this site, outdoor gathering space for barbecues, fire pits, that kind of thing. We haven't decided exactly what it would be. We've done lawn games, things like that at some of our other properties, a community garden, and bike racks. And that's not just for you, that's because we like bikes. And our management company would be Mayfair Property Management. They are a well-known property management company, and I really like working with them. They are on the ball. None of the entities or organizations have changed since you, you've seen us last. It's me with Structure Development, Sally Burchett, my colleague, she's in Laredo tonight, Jake Mooney with MRE Capital, and Dan Siler, Siler, I've been saying that name wrong for 10 years. And let's see. We would pay property taxes. Those are estimated at about $69,000 a year, and there will be off-site capital improvements, which would be Chambers Street, and I think y'all are aware that we would have to pay for that. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Ms. Andre, the, I wanted you to mention that it's Washington Park because?
Because we like that name, and the street that would go through there, it came to our attention when we were spending time with staff, that it was once named or would connect with Washington, and so that's the name of the street that you see at the, I always want to call it the north, but it's really just the top, it's the eastern side.
Okay, and, council, we've done these letters of support before, and the financing, the credits that you're applying for are not local credits?
No, they're not, that's an IRS-administered program that comes down through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
So it's mainly a letter of support saying, yes, we would like to have these 36 duplexes in the community, and it doesn't bypass any of the permitting process, much to your dismay?
Oh, how I wish, but no, it does not. It, it does not, it's just the first step, you know, for us, for our financing, that's all it is.
All right, Councilmember Crouch?
I, I was just curious, just the, the light gray, is that the parking?
No, the light, no, that would be a lot of parking, no, that is just grayed out because that is potential future development, and I didn't want you to be confused about what we were requesting today, and it's just the darker, brighter color. So the, the acreage, just to clarify that, too, it makes that kind of funny sideways L, or maybe a pipe, and that is roughly seven and a half acres, so this would be four and a point eight units per acre, I think, is the density we worked out.
Okay.
So not dense, that is to say.
Can you go back a couple of slides again?
Sure.
No, no, yep, maybe, so, is, is that kind of a general idea of what it's going to look like?
That is definitely, the, these are straight off of the floor plans, yeah, that is a rendering of the floor plan, we keep begging them to get rid of the side porches because we think they infringe upon the setbacks, but that's up for debate.
So, so your parking, would it be behind the house?
It would be, that's why we have those alleys shown, and it ha, it has to be, under the code, the parking cannot be in the, Jennifer's going to cringe because I'm going to get it wrong, but you have these different tiers.
Layers, layers.
Layers, thank you, layers, and it cannot be in the first part of the layer, and so this is a solution to put it in the back. If these were single-family homes, you might widen it a bit and put a driveway with still, but the, the driveway would have to go back far enough where the parking could not be in that first layer.
Okay, and then is the 36 that you're talking about Phase 1, or is it 36?
I hope it is Phase 1, but it is all that we have proposed for now.
Okay, could be more.
Not in this phase?
Not in this phase, no, no, I mean, if we do Phase 1, it is shown as we would do it, if we came back with Phase 2, that would have, you know, another set of buildings.
Yeah, and then the, the creek, drag creek at the back is still kind of your, the back of your?
It is, it is, and we've been studying the soil borings that were done on behalf of the city, and we have our own soil borings underway in order to determine, you know, foundational issues, but also whether or not we can improve that creek at some point.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Jackson?
I, you kind of asked the question I was going to ask about why Washington Park, I mean, I was just, and I kind of didn't, I heard part of what you said, and, but I didn't quite understand why the name, I mean, it's, I know it's maybe irrelevant to some people, I just was wondering why Washington?
It just came out of a conversation with city staff.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, there's been a lot of talk, I'm, I'm a little confused. All we're asking tonight is a letter of support for this tax credit that isn't coming from the cities.
That is exactly correct.
And everything else she's proposing is within the rules, so we can't vote on that anyhow because it's within the rules.
Correct.
So all you want right now is a letter saying that you can get credit from somebody else's taxes, is that right?
I would like a resolution of support, that's what I'm requesting, this man.
But these aren't, but this $250 isn't our fees, they're somebody else's fees.
No, that $250 actually is, would be a fee waiver from the City of Bastrop.
That's, out of all the fees you're about to pay, yes, and all you're wanting is the 200, because I'm sure you probably paid $200,000 in fees, I don't know, but, I'm just joking, but that's all we're doing on right now, it's just voting on a letter, is that right?
That is correct.
Yes.
Not anything that she's showing us that Phase 1, 2, 3, just this letter. Okay, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Crouch, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Council, we will be going into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, consultation with an attorney, and 551.074, personnel matters, we will be going into executive session to discuss Item J, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2022-32 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, removing from office Kathryn Nash as chairperson and member of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. It is 8:27, and we are in executive session. Got everybody? Okay, it is 9:20, and we are back in regular session, we're on Item 9J. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I make a resolution to approve Resolution 9J as written.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch and a second from Councilmember Rogers, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, we're on Item 10, and we don't have Mr. Peterson.
I move to adjourn.
There we go, I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Rogers, and, oh, Councilmember Plunkett says that's the spot, a second from Councilmember Plunkett, it is 9:20, and we are adjourned, everyone be safe tonight.